I'm just gonna go watch this just for a little bit. I gotta make sure my.
There you go, I like that. So, I'm just gonna read this really quickly and we'll get started with whoever would like to. So in accordance with the East Windsor Town Charter, Section 8481A, the Board of Finance shall hold a public budget meeting on Wednesday, March 23rd, 7PM, Town Hall Meeting Room, Levinry Street, Bradford, Connecticut, and presenting first, Lenny. Jason.
Keeping you guys in suspense for a minute. Good evening. Before I get started, I want to thank my board for the very collaborative and bipartisan way that they put our budget submission together. The work that this group has been able to do together over the last three budget cycles has been consistently collaborative and consistently in the best interest of the community. I'm grateful to have their support in this. I also want to thank Finance Director Amy O'Toole, who, as you all know, does an outstanding job. And she takes what would otherwise be a tedious process and makes it a lot more fun and a lot more productive at the end of the day. So I really, really enjoy the opportunity to work with her. First tech problem. I am the deputy IT guy. So throughout the presentation, first and foremost, you're gonna see either references to or comments about the new ClearGov software that you all approved a few months ago. We're using that as a means of increasing budget transparency so that anybody who wants to see where public dollars is spent can. They can look on our website and drill down to the individual line item to see how much we've spent historically going back to 2017. And I think that that provides some confidence in how we're spending public money. Once your part of the process is done, we'll also be utilizing another aspect of that software, which is the composition of a digital budget book. So that will provide even more sunshine for the general public to see where local tax dollars are going. So I want to start off with a little bit of a deeper dive into the community. Based on the most recent statistics available from the Connecticut Data Collaborative, the median household value, median home value in East Windsor is $216,000. That is the average. The median household property tax obligation under our current mill rate of 34.5 mils is $5,216. The proposed median household property tax obligation under the budget proposals put forward by the Board of Selectment and the Board of Education would raise that to $5,314 or just $98 more than the current year. That's exclusive of any changes in motor vehicles. Those numbers speak specifically to property taxes on homes. By contrast, the median household income in East Windsor at that same data point is $76,824. And we have 4,855 homes in our community. This is the age breakdown, again, based on data provided through ClearGov, of the people who live in town. And you can see that the population under five years old, they have 682 people, two of whom live in my house. Our school age population is 1,365 people. Adults of working age, 7,412 people, and our senior population, which is anybody aged over 65, 1,986 people. So those are the folks who live in the town of East Windsor. This chart shows where tax dollars have gone over time. The shaded area suggests where it's recommended to go up to the point of the submission of budgets by the first selectman and the superintendent of schools. So that does not factor in any changes that were made by either the Board of Education or the Board of Selectment. One of the things I want to point out, you see the pink triangle there that spikes up. That is representative of the $3.5 million added appropriation that the voters approved last year to pay down existing debt. So this is a way of illustrating that the voters approved the expenditure and we put the money where we said we were going to and freed up additional bond capacity down the road. This chart shows a three-year growth in our grand list. Since I took office, the grand list has grown by more than $50 million and our grand list is now safely over $1 billion. This chart shows motor vehicle grand list changes and total grand list changes amongst towns in our surrounding area. There's three data points that you can glean from this that I want to just illustrate. First, East Windsor has one of the more conservative estimates in terms of the increase in grand list for motor vehicle taxation. Overall, motor vehicles in Connecticut are going up considerably, and this is due to two things: high demand and low supply. Both of those things are combining to push the value of motor vehicles, even used cars. Secondly, East Windsor had a very strong overall growth rate in our total grand list, outpacing every other town in the region that did not implement a revow this year. Which actually is the final point that I want you folks to glean from this, that since we are now in the process of conducting a revow, if we look to Manchester or Enfield or Vernon, we can kind of get a forecast of what we can expect to be seeing this time next year. Grand lists are going up considerably. So this is the last year that we're in our current one. To put a finer point on that, this graph shows the same information as the previous one, but removes those towns that are implementing a revow. Our growth rate is very healthy and it outpaces all other non-reval towns in the area by at least 10%. So the grand list valuation is broken down into three categories: real property, motor vehicles, and personal property. Here we see the grand list distribution between those categories since 2019. One thing I would point out is the very slow but steady trend away from real property. That means that there's less of a tax burden that's being shouldered by homeowners in the community. Doing a little bit of a deeper dive, I asked the assessor to look into the change in valuation between residential and commercial properties. You can see here again, that same slow but steady shift off of a residential dependence and onto a commercial and industrial side, which confirms that less of the tax burden is in fact being borne by homeowners and more by businesses and industry in the community, which makes it easier for the people who live there. So this is where the total local appropriations, both historically and under the current proposals, are expected to go. 60% of the local funds are anticipated to go to the Board of Education and 40% to the total town government. This is consistent with the distribution history in East Windsor over time, and it remains consistent now. So again, think about those numbers that I threw out at the beginning, the current median household obligation and the projected one. In the current year, the average homeowner pays $5,216. Under the proposal submitted to you tonight, the number would rise to $5,314, which is a difference of $98 for the average home. Some will pay more, some will pay less, but the average will be $98 more. This pie chart shows which cost centers are projected to get which percentage of the town's appropriation. So you can kind of see where we're expecting that the money will go. This slide shows the difference that the average taxpayer will pay for each of the functions on the town side of the budget under this proposal. Again, that $98 average per household, $24 of that goes to the town side, $74 of that goes to the school side. This chart shows a specific dollar breakdown, and this is again made possible because of the tool that you all provided through ClearGov. This shows an actual dollar difference breakdown by cost center on the town side. So $6 more for the average taxpayer would be spent on general government. $5 more would be spent on public safety. $9 more would be spent on public works. $4 more would be spent on community services, $10 more would be spent on debt service, and $9 more would be spent on continues, specifically on non-negotiated wages, which ultimately would get transferred to another one of those cost centers at the appropriate time. $10 less would be spent on employee benefits and $11 less would be spent on capital outlay. That's where the town's apportionment of the new $24 that we're asking for would go. The remaining $74 goes to the Board of Education. So general government consists of most departments located in Town Hall, with the exception of the building department, most boards and commissions, legal costs, property insurance, activities and fees, IT functions, and the registrars of voters. Couple of key points about changes in this function that I want to point out. Under the planning department, the Board of Selectmen are recommending increasing professional services by $20,800 to keep a consultant on a 12-month basis to help with economic development work that's happening in town. A portion of that funding comes from reducing the ask that was set forth by the Economic Development Commission for effectively the same service. I would point out that the town of Winchester was just in the news for doing exactly the same thing, basically bringing in consultation services for economic development work. Winchester is planning on spending the same amount of money that we would be paying. Their population is roughly equivalent to ours, but they have about 20% fewer businesses than we do. Under activities and fees, the Cemetery Association is recommended to go up by $10,000, which is partially offset by reductions elsewhere in that department line, including health and wellness for Town Fair and Connecticut Main Street Center. IT costs are going up, which is driven by increases in professional services, software licensing, and equipment. Also included in our recommendation is funding for the newly formed Arts and Culture Commission. They initially asked for $8,150 to get them started, which included their recording secretary fees plus some programming money. And the selectmen agreed with my recommendation to start them at a smaller amount than that. So our budget includes an initial appropriation for them of $4,500. Our recommendation for general government is to go up $94,203 over last year's budget. The average homeowner in East Windsor will pay $289 in the next fiscal year, $6 more than they're paying this year. Public safety. This department consists of the Police Department, the Police Commission, the Building Department, Emergency Management and Communications. So wages in the Police Department are requested to increase by almost $122,000 over the current year. This increase does include the newly settled dispatchers contracts, step increases for officers and dispatchers, increases for police administration and civilian supervisors, and funding for a 27th sworn police officer who's not really new to the town, but a former officer who's returning from a military deployment. It does not include contractual increases for police officers, as they will be out of contracts come the end of June. So once that contract is resolved, that increase would go higher. There is one retirement that has been confirmed in the Police Department, and there is a separate resignation that was submitted either last week or the week before. Also in that department, supplies for equipment are requested to go up, I'm sorry, the supply line is requested to go up by $6,921, which is for the replacement of firearms for each of the sworn officers. And actually, the police administration have done a good job making sure that price is as manageable as possible. They took advantage of other means to offset that. In the building department, the professional services line is recommended to be reduced by $10,000 because that funding really hasn't been used for quite some time. And so I should point out, you know, because everybody is aware, there have been significant changes in the building department so far. Two long-term employees have left municipal service, one of whom with zero days' notice. And I should also let you know that the part-time person in that department has also given her notice, and Friday will be her last day. That's the bad news. The good news is that we have taken steps as quickly as possible to ensure continuity of service delivery in that department. Staff within Town Hall have been cross-trained to keep a business flowing. We have a shared service agreement with the town of South Windsor for a building official, which we're required to have by statute, and they have been gracious enough to work with us on that. And we've also extended an offer that has been accepted for a new assistant to the building official, and she starts in just a couple of weeks. Between the building official that we're using and the new staff person that we're onboarding, I am confident that the philosophy in that department will be much more of a customer service-friendly attitude than we have seen in recent past. And that in six weeks, six weeks from now, we will be better off than we were six weeks ago. So returning to the lines in the budget. The dispatch line in communications was reduced by $8,918. So that budget line is now just $482. And that's because Talon County Dispatch is no longer charging us for EMS dispatching services. Our recommendation for public safety is a total increase of $113,961 over last year. The average homeowner would be paying $510 for public safety within the town's general fund, $5 more than last year. Public Works. This consists of the Department of Public Works, Town Property, Road Maintenance, Sanitation, and the Building Committee. The town's cost for fire hydrants is expected to go up by 1% in the coming year. However, both this and our estimate for water costs are still preliminary, as we've not yet received final numbers from Connecticut Water with what the new rates will be. So that is subject to change one way or another. Our custodial contract for municipal buildings is expected to go up by $4,200, which is an adjustment based on the change in minimum wage. Our electric rate is going up 4%, which is causing an increase of $5,000 for electric consumption in municipal buildings and $10,000 for streetlights. I would point out that the town and the Board of Education did just jointly enter into a power purchase agreement through CCM and Titan Energy, which locks us in at a four-year contract at a rate of 8.45 cents per kilowatt hour. The good news is, that's a good rate. The bad news is, the contract that just lapsed was for a per-kilowatt-hour rate of 7 cents per kilowatt hour, which simply does not exist anymore. So we're expecting a slight increase in our oil and heat, and as you would imagine, a significant increase in our gas and diesel lines. We are recommending reducing our salt and sand budget by $20,000. And our collection and disposal costs will be going up for a total of $45,000. Just as an aside on that, so I'm involved in a lot of inter-community groups, CROG, KERMA, CCM, and waste management is a common theme. And oftentimes, when that conversation comes up, I have to sit back and not really participate because we are in such better straits than most other towns, especially those towns that are mirror towns. They're talking about tipping fees in the $125, $128 or ton range, and ours are 93. So while that is a statewide problem that needs to be addressed, I sit back quietly and try not to let too many people know the deal we have. Overall, for Public Works, our recommendation is to increase this department by $143,820 over last year's budget. And the average taxpayer would be paying $471 for an average of $9 more next year than they're paying this year. Community Services consists of Social Services, Senior Services, Recreation, Libraries, the Elderly Commission, and the Historic Commission. Social Services and Senior Services are expected to go up a total of $1,938 between the two departments. Recreation Services is requesting an $8,000 increase in professional services, which would go to cover the cost of the very popular summer concert series, and a $5,000 increase in site improvements to cover topsoil replacement for the ice skating rink at Town Hall Annex. It would also provide funding for a new diving board at East Windsor Park, and we're asking for an increase of $3,843 in supplies to cover a water rescue board and a water mannequin for CPR and AED training at the park as well. The libraries, each requested funding increases again this year, with Robert Library requesting an increase of $5,000, and the Warehouse Point Library requesting an increase of $14,250. Both requests are included in full in our recommendation. Overall, the Community Services budget would go up by $53,047, which would be a total of $4 more per household in East Windsor. Employee benefits, I like this one. Employee benefits in total are expected to decrease by $22,705. Changes within this department are driven by three things. First is the calendar, second is contractual obligations, and thirdly, our renewal costs. First, the calendar. You're all familiar with the concept of the 27th payroll. It's the number of working days we need to budget for to pay employees beyond the 26 days, 26 payroll days that fall within a new fiscal year. The 27th payroll line is set to increase by almost $50,000 this year because we're on the far, far end of the 27th payroll spectrum. So once we eclipse that, it'll come back down, but based on how the calendar falls, that number is what it is. Contractual obligations are driving increases in our FICA line, the 401A and 457 offerings, and in new spending. I'm sorry, workers' compensation, which equates to $25,000 in new spending in those benefits lines. And we're entering year three of our health insurance agreement that we've entered into with the Connecticut Prevention Partnership. They have told us to budget a 5% increase, although that could be anywhere from a 0% increase to an 8% increase. The contract that we entered into said that the annual renewal rates are not to exceed 8%. Historically, they have been 5% or below. We have not yet received our final quote from them. They are saying that the county adjusted rates through the CPP won't be available until May. But just to draw a contrast between the Prevention Partnership program and where we were when we were under an HSA, again, we're talking about renewal rates, you know, in the 5% range with CPP. That contrasts to 12% to 20% when we were under Cigna's HSA plan. So even on the high side, that still is a good deal for the community. One of the things that jumped out at me the first time I put this chart together was the jump between FY21 actuals and FY22 adopted. And at first, I couldn't figure out why that was. And then the descriptor at the bottom kind of jumps out at you, the actual expenditures versus the adopted. So we budget for employees to take whatever health insurance plan they are currently on in the current year, whether that's an employee plus one or a full family plan. When a vacant position occurs, we budget with the assumption that the new position that we're going to hire would take on the full family plan, the most costly plan that we have, so that we're in a place where we're adequately budgeted for it. But we also have language in all of our employment contracts that actually encourages municipal employees not to take town benefits. That is what leads to the difference between the adopted and the actual. But because the open enrollment period for our health insurance occurs after the budget process is done, we are left with having to use last year as an indicator of future demand. To put a finer point on that, our healthcare costs, we currently spend about $1.7 million on healthcare. If all benefits-eligible employees took that insurance, that cost would be $2.5 million. So that highlights the importance of having that payment in lieu of language in our contracts to encourage people off of the municipal healthcare offering. It saves us $800,000 to have that language in those contracts. Reductions in this entire department include $70,000 less in pension costs due to increased investment returns in 2021, which was a bullish year, and $100,000 less in health insurance premium costs based on an actual current employee census that Amy and her staff conducted and did a great job finding an opportunity for savings there without having an impact on employees. Just, it's a tighter budgeting that her office actually did the due diligence on, and that saved us $100,000. The average taxpayer for employee benefits would be paying $424, which is $10 less than they're paying in the current year. Debt service. We are recommending that debt service be increased by 9.74% or $101,110. This is mostly not new money, but money that we're repurposing from the lease purchase line that had been in capital outlay. That lease purchase line was entirely eliminated when we did the debt payoff last year, so there's no need to have that money funded anymore. So we're repurposing that to something that will provide future long-term gains for the community. It's akin to getting a bonus from work and paying off your credit card. It's a way to think about it. By paying off additional debt, we can potentially forego paying even more in unearned interest over time. And we increase the availability of funds for needed bond projects, like an emergency radio system, which we all know we need to do, a new roof on the high school, which we all know we need to do, and other town buildings are in need of roofs as well. And I am of the opinion, and I think many are, that we also need to be preparing long-term for a senior center or a community center that will help people meet the needs that they're facing as they try and age in place. So the average taxpayer would be paying $138 for debt service, which would be $10 more than last year. This is a snapshot of what our outstanding debt position is. As you can see, we currently have approximately $7.7 million in outstanding bond indebtedness. We owe $2.6 million in principal and interest on the Bradford Elementary School modular project, $2.4 million for the roads and dam bond project from 2016, and $2.7 million from the 2013 clean water loan for a total of $7.7 million. The town could bond as much as $237 million, which means we are at approximately 3% of our debt capacity. But our debt service is limited based on policy not to exceed more than 10% of our expenditures. That means we could actually add another $3 million to our debt service and do long overdue capital investments in the community, but we continue to be held back by the 2% budget provision in the charter. That is, we can see that that is holding us back. Efforts have been made over time to ensure the capital improvement projects funding was increased by at least 3% per year. Most years, that hasn't been attained. Funding this budget at 3% allows for at least some modest sustained growth in capital projects. Our recommendation eliminates $94,000 from that lease purchase line that I talked about, moves some of that funding to debt service, and increases the overall capital outlay by $30,000. The overall department budget is recommended to decrease by $64,000, again, because of repurposing of some of that lease purchase money. This slide looks a little bit different from the other slides that I've shown you because I think that it tells a little bit of a different story. We typically budget between $900 and $920,000 for capital improvement projects. But as you can see, our expenditures far outpace that. This is a result of spend-down projects at the end of each fiscal year, which have been made possible because of the health of our fund balance and because of expenditures being under budget in our operating budget at the end of each year, some of which has to do with that healthcare savings that is built in. Rather than approaching things the same way that we have for years and years, I want to take a different approach this year and in the out-years. Unless we're able to commit bond funds for it, I think that we should be taking half of the end-of-the-year surplus, moving it into a CNR account for the construction of a new community center or the addition of a community center. What this would allow us to do, if we're not going to bond for it, would allow us to effectively self-finance a new facility that will allow people to age in place as our population continues to age. East Windsor is 10% older as a community than Hartford County. We know that people want to stay in their homes. We also know that we have been talking about this for more than 20 years, and we are no further along than we were 20 years ago. We need to be in a position where we are prepared to provide the services that our constituency is going to need. The average taxpayer would pay $138 for capital outlay, which is $10 more than last year. And a few other things I want to point out before I wrap up. So the Board of Selectmen took two actions that didn't really fall within one particular department that I want to talk about a bit. The first is the part-time wage adjustment. So everybody knows that the minimum wage in Connecticut is on its way to $15, and I think by the end of the fiscal year, we'll be at $15. I'm sorry, the end of fiscal '23. What the effect that is having is we're taking seasonal employees and we're paying them $15 an hour. We have permanent part-time employees who provide support for departments in town on a year-round basis that are making currently $17.75 on their way to, Amy helped me out, is it 1813? 1811. So you're seeing what's called salary compression. The summer kid from college is doing just about as well as the person who is working a part-time job on retirement, you know, to support what the town is doing on a year-round basis. So the selectmen have decided to take the permanent part-time rate and increase that from the current $17.75, which would go to 1811 normally. We're going to take that from $17.75, go to $19 this year and $20 next year as a thank you for the folks who have been dedicated to us on a permanent part-time basis and to eliminate some of that salary compression. The second thing that we did, which was brought to us by a number of different boards and commissions, is we looked at the rates we pay for recording secretarial services. We haven't really revisited this in about 20 years, so we are outdated. We are behind in terms of what many communities are doing. And it's proven difficult to attract people to provide that service for us. So the Board of Selectmen broke the boards and commissions that have recording secretaries into three tiers based on things like length of meetings, legal complexity, a number of other categories. So the tier one would be the Board of Selectmen, Planning and Zoning Commission, Wetlands, Board of Finance, ZBA, Pension Board, and the Board of Assessment Appeals. Those boards would pay their recording secretaries $150 for meetings less than two hours and $2.25 for meetings more than two hours. Tier two would be a status quo tier, and that would include the Capital Improvement Committee, the Police Commission, the Building Committee, and Charter Revision Commission. They would keep their rate at $125 an hour. And tier three is those boards that are typically less work and less legal exposure. That includes the Economic Development Commission, Ag Conservation. That includes the Economic Development Commission, Ag Conservation Diversity, Arts and Culture, Elderly, Historic Preservation, AHRC, Veterans Commission, and Ethics. We would adjust that rate down to a standard $75 an hour. I'm sorry, $75, thank you. So, under the proposals set forth by the Boards of Selectmen and Education, the new mill rate would be .65 mills. Between the two boards, we're asking for $1,585,722 in new dollars, of which $493,012 would go to the town government, $1,092,710 would go to the Board of Education, and the average taxpayer would pay $98 more than they do this year. Thank you for your time. Do you want to use yours or do you want to use mine?
Good evening. I'm Randy Reckley, the current East Windsor Public Schools Board of Education Chair. Madam Chair, Finance Director, Miss O'Toole, and the Board of Finance. Thank you for having us here this evening in person to present the BOE proposed FY23 budget. The proposal plan was created to support the priorities identified in the five-year strategic plan in our newly adopted Portrait of the Graduate. The proposed budget was developed in budget workshops and discussions with staff and administration. The mission of the East Windsor Public Schools is to provide a high-quality, comprehensive, and meaningful education for all students within a safe and nurturing environment. Each student will be treated as an individual and taught to function as a member of a group and also a productive member of society. We will strive for each student to be proficient in all curricular areas. Our guiding principle, inspiring growth, and achieving success. The BOE proposed FY23 budget vision to support the needs of our students by budgeting for a traditional school year. The past three years of the pandemic have had a visible impact on our students and staff. There have been many learning challenges and struggles as a result of time spent out of school due to illness, quarantine, and remote instruction. As a result, we need to plan for both the academic and social and emotional needs of our children moving forward. The budget includes middle school and high school sports in addition to continuing after-school programs at the middle school and high school. These activities were significantly disrupted by the pandemic. Although the disruption saved district funds, our kids need the opportunity for extracurricular activities more than ever. We have a new central office leadership team focused on student outcomes. The new superintendent, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, and our new Director of Special Ed. They are extremely qualified and talented personnel that bring a hand on, excuse me, hand on approach to leadership, visibility within the schools and community while focusing on improved student outcomes. It's clear in their communication to the Board of Education that there is increased accountability to student learning and operations with the change in this leadership team. The reorganization of the business office to improve overall operations and efficiency. This budget reflects the elimination of the outsourcing of the business operations along with the Food Service Director position and reallocating the funds to support an in-house business office that will overall improve our efficiency for the school district. In the brief amount of time, an interest business manager has highlighted both the need as well as the benefits of a change to the structure. We need to expand our curriculum to address our highest learners by providing new curriculum to help retain students in the East Windsor Public School System. A pathways program at the high school, a STEM teacher at the board at Broadbrook Elementary School, a business teacher at the high school. We have also introduced a new math curriculum, and we are currently seeing gains and growth in our students. Although not in the local budget, a tag, tag will be introduced in the middle school as part of a two-year grant. Thank you very much, and I will now be turning over this part of the presentation to the Board of Education Vice Chair, Kate Carey-Trow.
Hi, everybody. Just a little bit more about this. We've been establishing our portrait of the graduate goals at the high school, and we are now working to implement these goals district-wide. These are goals for our students to be well-rounded, independent thinkers and decision-makers, responsible citizens, and self-aware individuals. We support this by encouraging class discussions, interactive learning, and social emotional awareness. To address learning loss, we have implemented a new math curriculum, as Randy mentioned, and our students are making gains. We recently held a literacy review across our elementary school where a consultant came in to review our reading and writing curriculum and made recommendations for individualized lessons to motivate and engage our students and more training to support our teachers with these new changes. Dr. Chudron will speak more in detail about the district budget presentation and our strategic priorities. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I feel like I spent a lot of time here. But I always appreciate you having me. So as the Chair and Vice Chair indicated, this budget proposal is based on our needs, primarily driven by our newly adopted strategic plan, which focuses really on the work and our needs regarding our academic and social emotional needs, which is probably more important than ever coming out of the pandemic. So some highlights as far as the budget proposal. So the overall budget proposal reflects a 4.35 increase. The entire budget proposal can be found in the workbook, which is on our website. It was also the same workbook that was delivered at last week's Board of Finance meeting as well. And certainly I'll be talking and reflecting on that workbook because the information as far as the spending in each of the various cost centers is outlined extensively there. Some of the highlights, though, that I do want to just bring attention, and this was mentioned by the Chair and Vice Chair, is that this budget is based on a traditional school year. Although we're just passing the second year of anniversary as far as really when school shut down with the pandemic, it can't be lost on us that this is the third school year. So to put that in perspective, if you're a senior, your only traditional school year was your freshman year. If you're an eighth grader, it was fifth grade. So I think that sets in a little bit when you take that into consideration. So because of our day-to-day operations being disrupted, we saw spending changes with things like special ed, transportation, after-school activities, substitute teachers, not to say that we didn't need substitute teachers, we just couldn't get them due to the pandemic and people not wanting to leave their house. So just want to highlight that, especially these last several weeks, we're moving and trending in the right direction. We're optimistic as far as what that's going to look like. And thus, this will be the first time in the last few years in which we anticipate our budget and our need and our spending will be reflected based on a traditional school year. With that, salaries comprise approximately 70% of our budget. So most of those are primarily contractual through collective bargaining agreements. Also, special ed comprises approximately 27% of the overall budget. So those are mandated services, federal and state mandated based on special ed needs. I will say within this budget, we do have one contingency for special ed private placement. I can tell you our current number of students at 10 private placements are at all-time low and have not been that well in the 10 to 12 years I've been administrator at the central office. I can tell you those numbers can only go up, unfortunately. As far as staffing, we are proposing changes within this budget as far as staffing. So within our special ed contracted services, we have a significant decrease. We basically outsource to support staff based on program changes. That's no longer going to be needed after this year. So therefore, we have a reduction, a significant reduction on that line. We do, in this proposal, as the Chair had stated, within this, we have a business teacher at the high school. I can tell you that most competitive high school curriculums have business operates. Business is a separate certification by the state than math. And so certainly to support students' pathways and to post-secondary, we feel like that's a necessity to meet that need. And certainly is an area where we want to provide offerings for our students and stay competitive with that. Also at Broadbrook, we have a STEM science teacher. That's an area where we certainly need that expertise to bring in. Also, that additional staff member would allow the flexibility for our grade-level teachers to meet more frequently and consistently to co-plan on curriculum and also have individual student meetings focused on students that really need intervention and having data review meetings. So that position not just brings in an expertise on science, but also empowers our ability to collaborate and improve our curriculum and our individual student needs. And within here, we have a reallocation of administrative positions. As my participation at your Board of Finance meetings, it's well-known that we are reorganizing our business office. But with that, we are also eliminating the Director of Food Service. So we have a food service supervisor. That person oversees our day-to-day operations and will continue the administrative tasks that have been assigned to the food service director will be reassigned to the business manager. So rather than us outsourcing where we had someone in district in our business office, two days a week, we'll have someone five days a week, and with that, we can increase some of the added responsibilities. The costs are offsetting when you take into account eliminating the food service director position and then the decrease in our contracted services in which we were previously outsourcing. So what we'll get in return is a full-time business manager, someone assigned as a payroll associate and an accounts payable person, and then we'll have checks and balances as well, and which will also improve our overall operations. I was going to press the button, sorry. I will, I will mess this up at some point. So the pie chart, as far as overall local dollars. I want to focus that this is based on our local budget needs. So this does not take into account our grants. So a perfect example is insurance. You see that set at 11%. I can tell you that we have 1.4 million as far as our costs are covered in grants and other funding sources and include our choice funds and tuition reimbursement. So certainly if that 1.4 was included, that 11% would be much higher. So again, like when you see this breakdown in costs, this is the breakdown as far as local costs. Which brings me, I know that's not appealing to the eye, but brings down as far as overall budget broken down by departments. So we have our various schools along with our departments such as like Buildings and Grounds, Curriculum, Health Services, and such. I know this format that's within the budget booklet is different than previous years. I feel that it's improved as far as improved, as far as providing clarity, as far as our need as well as where the dollars are allocated. So one of those changes is that FTE. FTE refers to full-time employees. So that's a number of employees. I know there's a couple of numbers where it might be like 0.5 or 0.6. We do have employees that are not full-time. And so that's why you'll have it reflected as a partial employee. Previous years, we have not projected this number, so that's why you don't see it in the column to the far left. The goal would be not just this year, but future years will continue to project our FTEs are full-time employees so that you can see a side-by-side comparison of future years. With that, as far as kind of changes, as far as reporting, in past years, special ed staff at the building-based levels were reported within the building. So for example, if I was a high school special ed teacher, my salary would have been reported within the high school in that first and first role. All special ed costs as far as salaries are now within the special ed department, essentially. That's where the need is, so that's where we're reflecting the cost. So when you see the number of employees, that's referring to our number of employees district-wide across all three buildings along with anyone that's working like in central office and administration as well. So we feel that provides a better clarity as far as our need along with where the dollars are spent. Also cafeteria, you'll see that there's asterisks regarding, and then offsetting. So the cost there is basically salaries. And so our cafeteria is a, does generate revenue. So the offsetting is based on the revenue. I can tell you, based on our most recent projections, the Board of Ed is projected to contribute about 60,000. So thus, that's where the difference of the 60,000 is, is basically, you have the total of the salaries and then the revenue that's, that's short by 60,000, and then thus would be supplemented on the Board of Ed side. And then, last, just want to point out, you have various totals on, on the bottom. So the 26-plus million reflects the local contribution. And then you have the additional grants and other funding sources, which equates to over 3.9 million, and then our total operating is over 30 million. So we wanted to paint the whole picture as far as not just the local budget, but what we receive in grants and funds, and then the total operating budget as well. So just like any budget, you have some things that are constantly contracts, which So just like any budget, you have some things are constantly contracts, which are much easier to project. And then you have budget variables. So some variables I just want to highlight. As far as numbers, it's medical insurance. Currently, it's budgeted at five percent increase. I can tell you that projections have come from anywhere from zero percent to eight percent. I know the first selectman indicated as far as the state plan, under the state plan, we are also part of that plan. The maximum is eight percent. So the latest projection came at the max. We're still anticipating that will come in a little bit lower. So that's why we still have it set at five percent. The unfortunate part is that final number doesn't come till next. So pretty much after budget, so something that we will continue to have to monitor. Also, this current budget doesn't include any retirements. Typically, we average about two over the last three or four years. Typically, that would be about the differential between thirty five and forty thousand total. And then we are currently just the beginning contract negotiations with our nurses or classified and paraprofessionals. So they will have salary increases for next year. I can tell, tell you that we have projected increases within this budget based on current trends and projections. However, that could be off slightly. Once those contracts are finalized, we anticipate those will be finalized sometime in June. Again, after this budget has kind of been finalized and set. So here I have a, a sample budget worksheet. So within the budget workbook, there's a worksheet for every department along with a budget commentary. So I'm just going to use one as an example as far as just providing additional like understanding clarity as far as the information there. So the one I have up here is Broadbrook School. And one of the first things I want to point out is that you have certified staff and non certified staff. In previous years, we used to break down certified staff by every category. So there'd be a separate line for paraprofessionals, it'd be a separate line for office staff, it'd be a separate line for aides, behavior interventionists. Anyone not certified felt that it was clear to put them in one category. So thus, we're recording it on one line. Within those buildings, it does not include the special ed staff. So as indicated earlier, any of the special education staff like paraprofessionals that are assigned for students in special ed would be in the special ed department. Good to know. I've been in the classroom plenty of times, you never know what the kids are going through.
Third man there.
Deputy only gets you a third.
Deputy deputy, yeah. I can't change my Facebook picture.
Yes, I think so, looks like it. We're going to bring you into the schools. We have a ITO. Alright, so that was not a certified staff. So a couple of things I just want to indicate is each of the buildings have a technology line. What that technology line refers to is our classroom technology needs. Typically, most of that cost is referred to smart viewers. Sometimes almost similar to what we're viewing here as far as online instructional tool for our teachers. Also to refer to like desktop stations that need to be replaced. We also have district wide technology lines that refers more to things such as our network, our servers, wifi hotspots. As we expand those as well. So just to differentiate between the building based technology and district wide technology. And then again, when you're looking at the worksheets, this refers to the local budget. So for example, summer school, this is proper, it refers to summer school and indicates. If you looked at this, you would not think that we're running summer school. I can tell you that we're, we have summer school planned for regular education for all three buildings. It's funded in our COVID S R grant. So we have a worksheet for our grants, it would be indicated there. It would indicate that summer school is running for all three buildings. But because this is referring to the local budget in each of these departments, those things would not be indicated in grants. Those would be separate, it's at the end of the booklet on page is thirty eight to forty three, I believe. So just highlighting that as well. So within each work workshop department, you have the worksheet and then there's a budget commentary prior. I can tell you the budget commentary isn't a dollar by dollar description as far as how the money is needed and being spent. But rather it's providing clarity more in the bigger picture items. So the larger account lines or explanation, if there was a significant change between the increase or decrease. They also indicate if it's existing need or a new need. And then if something is covered by the grant, it will be indicated like, like for example, middle school. We have a talented and gifted teacher, which would be a new position, but it's grant funded. And that would be within the budget commentary, but you would not see it in the worksheet. You would see it in the grant worksheet in the back. So that would be part of salary. So we certainly wanted to indicate as far as what's included in the departments by also separating out what's in local versus the grants. Just a sample budget commentary, this one is the high school. And then grants, I've mentioned grants a few times throughout the presentation. I just felt that it's important to distinguish between the two types of grants that we have in the school. So we have the revolving year to year grants, so those are listed there. Why I can tell you regarding those graces, those are grants we typically get to a year year basis. The vast majority of the funds are dedicated to staff. We see very little increase or decrease with the amount of money we receive. So it's fairly consistent and predictable year to year. So for example, I can tell you the Lions Grant revealing the last six years, it's been the exact same amount. So not increase, not a decrease, the dollar's been, been the same. So we have the same staff pretty much in there, those staff are staying with us. Basically, it covers actually a less percent of their salary year to year because that amount stays. And most contracts, the salary increases year to year. And then we have our expiring COVID grants, and so there's three of them listed. I can tell you as far as what's in those grants. And again, it's written in the description, starting on page thirty eight, includes staffing, includes technology, HVAC. Instructional supplies and professional development. So I kind of want to just finish by highlighting, even though we've been in the pandemic for the last three school years. Despite the pandemic, we're making strides. I can tell you I'm in the buildings on a weekly basis. I can tell you our teachers are teaching and our kids are engaged, they're participating in extracurricular activities. And we're seeing increase in test scores. So certainly we believe our future is bright. And then with that, truly believe that this budget proposal reflects our immediate needs. Certainly, we always can do more with additional funding. But we also recognize the need to demonstrate fiscal responsibility and feel strongly that this proposal does just that. And certainly look forward to sitting down with this board at our workshop next week and appreciate any feedback.
Okay, so for now, I'm going to put out a piece of paper. So that if anybody would like to participate and give their comments or questions, you can sign up.
There's, so it's me, Patrick, the room, and then there are three numbers. I can't change how you view it, that's, that's. So if you, I don't know, who's got the mouse up there?
So when I call on you, please just state your address for the recording secretary, Paul Anderson. Yep, we have Elise coming next.
Okay, it's Paul Anderson, eighty nine Main Street, Broadbrook. Impressive presentation. And a lot of work went into it, you can tell, and that's good. The numbers are well within reading. So what I would like to see is a way for the public to be able to overall indicate whether they would approve the budget that stands that's been presented so far. Which has never happened. But that's something that I've been indicating a preference for, for some time. That we're having a public hearing, that's fine. But then the public can't take this budget as presented and indicate whether they would accept it as is. And we can all go home and sleep. I obviously can't do it here, it's not what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting that some method for the public to be able to vote on the budget as presented. And then have the Board of Finance do adjustments to the budget if necessary. As opposed to adjusting the budget before the public even get to choose. That's my opinion, because I'm in favor of what I see. I think an excellent job has been done and I would, that's, that's my end goal.
Alright, Frances Neal, Frances Neal, one fifty three Mall Road Road. I am speaking as a parent of three children. Yes, I am on the Board of Education and I did see all the information. So I, I, I know how the budget was built, but as a parent of three kids currently in the school district. I echo Paul's sentiments that I wish you would just put the budget forward as it has been presented. And give people in town the opportunity to say whether or not they approve it before any changes are made. I think that my kids deserve the opportunities that this budget presents for them. And I hope that you guys agree. I did. I want to thank everyone that volunteered their time and those that represent the Board of Ed and the town. I have no issue with the town budget selfishly approved. I said on the board, but I think it's an excellent budget. The Board of Ed budget as presented, I agree, it looks good. But in my mind, I still have a question and I haven't got clarification on yet. So I'm going to need me and I'm going to ask the question. There was a million and a half dollars returned from last year's budget. The explanation that I received was that it was money that came in after money was taken out of the budget. Paid for the students that come in, come out of towns. I get that. So that money, when he got that, they got turned over to the town. But those expenses were taken out of the wrong lines, which means there was a million and a half dollars. That wasn't spent last year. I know some of that has to do with the pandemic and some of that has to do with programs that have been deleted. But because that is out there, my concern is somebody out there is going to say, get rid of the entire million and a half, they don't need it. I would like to have breakdown as to what of that hundred, million, that million and a half, how much of that is actually needs to be reduced. Such as the seventy two thousand dollar increase for the out of town students that coming in, because it's seventy two students at thousand dollars a fee. Take that out of that money, indicated there's treating physicians, I believe, is the total going in. There's been some other offsets to that. What can we get for a breakdown that will give us the exact amount that we didn't utilize last year out of the budget? Because if we didn't utilize it last year. Then how much of that, that we didn't utilize and we have to utilize this year? It just doesn't make any sense when I try to do them out. So I just would like some clarification on that if anybody has it.
Bill Los, forty four Mall Road Road. I've got to object, object to the Board of Education budget. I think that four point three five percent increase is way much over the budget. We don't need that much. As senior citizens, on fixed incomes, it's tough. Cost of living has gone up and we can't afford this extra four point three five percent. I'd like to know what the cost per student is. We used to graduate a hundred over a hundred students. Last year, we graduated fifty four, half of them out. Our school population keeps going down, the budget keeps increasing, increasing, increasing every year. I don't think that's right, there's something wrong with our school system. I'd like to know what the cost per student is. I know it's up, probably way over what all the students are paying in all the towns. So I advise the Board of Finance to reduce that school budget. I like the town budget, the increase is about right, but I think the school budget is twice what it should be.
Oh, hi, can you hear me? Okay, very good, thank you. Elise Spielberg, two four four Rice Street. And I'm also, I'm speaking on behalf first of, for the Library Association of Warehouse Point. And I'm also on the Board of Trustees of the Library Association of Warehouse Point. So first, I want to thank the Board of Finance for your support of the library and commitment to the Town of East Windsor. Over the past few years, the library has grown and we've added many more new and exciting resources for the benefit of all town residents. When COVID caused disruptions, the library developed unique ways for residents to access materials. And we purchased digital resources to meet the needs of our town. We are proud of how the library contributes to the East Windsor community. And so we hope the Board of Finance will fund our budget request as recommended by the First Selectman. This will enable the library to provide more materials, services and technology that support the pursuit of lifelong learning of East Windsor residents. Thank you very much. And on the other side, I will also support the Board of Education budget. I've been around a long time as well. I've had children go through the school system. I've seen programs cut and I'm so happy to see that programs are being brought back that will address the needs of all level learners. I think that's very important and I appreciate that there's a chance to look at that opportunity. And as well, I really thought it was a nice, clear presentation. And as well, I really thought it was a nice, clear presentation. So I am in support of the Board of Education budget as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else before we adjourn? So I'm going to adjourn this public hearing.